Okay, it's six o'clock, so I'm gonna go ahead and take roll call. Commissioner Abrego?
Here.
Commissioner Esparza?
Here.
Commissioner Lopez?
Here.
Vice Chair Gillum?
Here.
Chair Hyde?
Here.
Okay, great. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, will everyone please rise and repeat with me the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag-
Flag.
...of the United States of America-
States of America.
And to the republic for which we stand-
Republic, one nation-
One nation under God-
Under God.
Indivisible- ...with liberty and justice for all.
For all.
Okay.
Do we need to do roll call of members?
I, no, I took that out of order, Chair. So if you want to move to the approval of the minutes-
Next item is approval of the minutes. Please state your name who is approving it and seconding it, so they'll know to write their names down correctly.
Okay, I'm Gillum and I will approve it.
Okay, I'll second it, this is Ernie.
Okay, so we have Gillum and Esparza, okay.
Roll call, please.
Okay, Commissioner Abrego?
Yes.
Commissioner Esparza?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gillum?
Yes.
Chair Hyde?
Yes. The next item is presentations, and I'll turn that over to you, John.
Yes, thank you.
Before, John, before you start, Chair Hyde, I just wanna kinda remind everybody, because we're all on the phone, it's really easy to talk over everybody else at once, so before everybody talks, kinda pause for a minute, because since we're not there presently, somebody may be talking over and I can't hear.
Okay, thank you, John. Okay, so I'm gonna just do a recognition of outgoing planning commissioners. At this time, we would like to recognize the service of three dedicated Paramount residents, Roy Gillum, Jim Hyde, and Jaime Lopez, who have served as members and leaders of the Planning Commission Development Review Board and Economic Development Board. The City Council will be presenting them with plaques at an upcoming City Council meeting, but we also want to give them our thanks, and I'd like to say just a few words about each one. Commissioner Gillum was appointed to the Planning Commission in 2003 to fill a vacant seat when Paramount residents elected Daryl Hoffmeyer to the City Council. Since that time, Commissioner Gillum has guided us through countless projects, plenty of housing projects, commercial proposals, conditional use permits. Roy Gillum is a voice of reason, a calming force, and has a big heart. He's been on a first-name basis with people experiencing homelessness and never made a big deal out of it. When his neighbors got in a little over their heads with their home addition, he shared a bit of his first-class woodworking skill and gladly pitched in. Not only is he skillful with power tools, he has a green thumb, and we were lucky to get a glimpse of his lilies when we'd deliver commission binders to his house. We're gonna miss you, Roy. Commissioner Chair Hyde has been on the Planning Commission since 2007, when a spot opened up with Tom Hanson's election to the City Council, and he got right to work. Jim Hyde has never been afraid to make good use of his gavel, and he's excellent at calling applicants up and getting them on the record that they'll follow through with their promises. He's been a strong ADA advocate and has always made sure that there are enough accessible parking spaces when it comes to retail and commercial projects. If anyone has seen Jim Hyde's house, you know, this is a guy who lives in one of the coolest mid-century homes and has a good eye for design. Thank you, Jim. And finally, Jaime Lopez, Commissioner Lopez. He may not be the longest-serving planning commissioner, but Commissioner Lopez has had an enduring and unmistakably positive impact on commission decisions. Mr. Lopez grew up in Paramount, left for a few years for work and school, but never forgot about his hometown. When he returned from Northern California to pursue a PhD in urban planning, he made a point to return to Paramount. We appreciate the perspective he brought throughout his term as a car fee resident. He's paid close attention to bicycle infrastructure, and he's also had the health of residence in mind by pushing for trees that do better at cleaning the air. And it's been a pleasure working with you, Commissioner Lopez. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, public comments?
No public comments.
Okay, old business. First item on the agenda is a continued conditional use permit number 886. The request by the Tow World Inc. to operate a business, and they're asking to have this reviewed. First of all, we need to, this is a continued item, so I'll need a motion to close public hearing first, and state your name, so they'll know in the record who burst and seconded it. Do I hear a motion? Go ahead.
As you can see, I'll make a motion to close it. It's, I'm Roy, I'm Gillum.
Ernie Esparza will second it.
Roll call, please.
Uh, yes. Give me just one minute. Commissioner Abrego?
Yes.
Commissioner Esparza?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gillum?
Yes.
Chair Hyde?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is conditional use permit number 858. Update review of Big Ben's Car Wash at 16482 Paramount Boulevard in the C3 General Commission Commercial Zone.
Commissioner Chair Hyde, if we could go back to the previous item and have you, somebody make a motion to remove the item from the calendar?
Oh, you bad, I'm sorry. Do I hear a motion to take this off of our agenda?
Yes, I'll make a motion, yeah. And I'll second it, Ernie Esparza.
Roll call, please.
Okay, Commissioner Abrego?
Yes.
Commissioner Esparza?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gillum?
Yes.
Chair Hyde?
Yes. Now on to the next item. Update, a review of Big Ben's Car Wash at 16482 Paramount Boulevard on the C3 General Commercial Zone. This is just to receive and file, please. I need a motion for that?
Jaime Lopez, motion.
I'll second, Jaime Abrego.
Roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Abrego?
Yes.
Commissioner Esparza?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gillum?
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Hyde?
Yes. Next item is new business, and it's a conditional use permit number 885. A request by Isaac Corin, ICI Architectural Millwork Inc. to operate a cabinet shop with the use of an exterior dust collection system at 14059 Garfield Avenue in the M2 Heavy Manufacturing Zone. Staff?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. This item is a request to allow the operation of a cabinet shop with the use of an exterior dust collector and an indoor spray booth, and John King will handle this item.
Thank you, John, and thank you, Chair Hyde and commissioners. Again, 14059 Garfield Avenue, and this is at the southwest corner of Garfield Avenue and Quimby Street. See a little photo on your packet of slides showing the existing building. So onto the background slide. This is a, again, a request to operate a cabinet shop with the use of an exterior dust collection system, and it's in the M2 Zone, which allows for a cabinet or carpenter shops with a conditional use permit. And you'll recall, about a year and a half, the Planning Commission and then the City Council approved changes to the manufacturing zones, the M Zones, to what previously you only needed a business license, if you were a woodshop or a carpenter shop, to open up. You changed it so a conditional use permit is required. So this, I believe, would be the first of these types of shops to have, to go through the CUP process. So it's a change for the benefit of the Paramount community. The lot is about 30,500 square feet, and the building is about half that size. Just a bit of history. The city attorney will recall, as a city prosecutor, all the effort that went into addressing problems, really problems from the previous tenant. Now, the previous tenant was a spray booth manufacturer, who actually went by a number of names, Spray Zone, Spray Booth Zone, Performance Systems, Spray Zone Net. It was the same owner, just kind of coming up with new names, you know? You can only imagine. So here's some trucks, and there's an unpermitted spray booth in the back. Through the efforts of public safety, and especially the city prosecutor, this business is gone. There was a new property owner that took over and was looking for a good tenant, and the planning department reviewed a number of options, and a lot of them just did not work, were not good for the community. And this one, with the CUP, we see to be okay. So again, it's to, onto the next slide. A request to install a spray booth within the building and a dust collection system, mainly the dust collector itself on the outside, to the rear of the building. And I'll show you the site plan in a moment. The, mostly other equipment would be inside the building, and there's a little area to the rear for the dust collector and small storage. So onto the site plan. You'll see on the top, Quimby Street running east and west. On the right is Garfield Avenue running north and south. The property is outlined in red. The building is outlined in blue, with a little bit of a blue highlight. And you can see in green where the equipment would be located. So to the rear of the building, there's that small area, well, actually, about 40 feet in the back. The green represents where the dust collector would go. And you can see this is far away from the streets, about as far away as you can get to minimize visibility for aesthetics. The spray booth would be inside, you'll see where that is on the inside. So all part of the woodworking process. This is a good time to point out the parking lot, and there's a a recommended condition to restripe for ADA purposes, and to touch up the little landscaped area, and also to add a few trees in the front setback. There's just a little bit, I'll show you a photo in just a moment. Here's what the dust collection system on the outside would look like. It's a Donaldson Torret Model 460 IRD. And you can see the dimensions there. It's 14 by 3.75 length and width. The height, it's about 10 feet in height. So you'd really have to look hard to see it in relation to the gate, the side gate off of Quimby Street. It's really tucked away. Onto the photos. There's a photo slide. At the top is the building, so that's looking at a southwesterly direction. And you can see some, if you look carefully, there's some weeds on that photo. But particularly, if you look at the bottom-left photo on this slide, kinda toward the back, which is along the south property line of, the south of the parking lot, it's pretty unkempt, needs a little more maintenance. There's a condition to plant some shrubs there and fix it all up. And then you see the little space. Actually, it may look a little wider than it is in reality, but by the camera angle, just a couple feet. There's a little bit of space between the wheel stops and the sidewalk. So there's a recommended condition of approval to plant at least three 24-inch box trees. And you can see on the right, the gate. So again, you could, you will not be, there will not be very much visibility. We're also recommending, it's actually not in the conditions in your report, but we realize that there's, upon further look at the parking lot, that there should be a condition to re-slurry it, to do a quick re-slurry, to touch it up and re-stripe it. So the next slide is the environmental review. So the applicant contracted with a planning consultant, an environmental consultant called Elevated Entitlements, to review the act in terms of the CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. So it's applicable to this project, as with any project. And the consultant pays special attention to air quality impacts because of the woodwork and the possible dust. And they made the determination that there would be no significant impacts to air quality. The applicant would have to follow AQMD rules, including the permitting and the operation of the business, going along with the rules, Rule 1137, about particulate, PM10 emission reductions from woodworking operations, and Rule 1155, PM10 emission reductions for dust collector operations. And just to recap about PM, so PM is the particulates, one millionth. PM10 is the term for particles smaller than 10 micrometers, or one millionth of a meter, so down to the particle. Onto the conditions. So just to review, for this kind of thing, you need an AQMD permit for not only the spray booth, but the dust collection system. The applicant would also need permits from the fire department and the building and safety division of the planning department. Cameras would be installed, or actually, the applicant has already installed cameras, and again, the parking lot to be touched up, and also to have the 24-inch box trees. So with that, we are recommending that you approve this, that you adopt Resolution PC 2018. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. We do have the applicant's environmental consultant. We have a phone number, if you have any questions, we could call the environmental consultant. Thank you.
Any questions from staff?
Yes, this is Roy. I would like to ask if there's a sprinkler system in the building.
I believe there is, and I'm gonna turn to associate planner, Reyna, to double-check. Give me one moment. We're actually gonna call the applicant to double-check on that.
Okay.
Bottom line, though, is the plans, once they submit, it will go through the plan check process. And if there's a requirement by AQMD and/or the building code to install the sprinklers, and they're not in there, they would have to install them as a requirement.
Okay, that's what I need, thank you.
We should recap, actually, I don't know if we mentioned it, Building and Safety Manager Antonio Garcia is not in attendance this evening.
Okay.
The authority on these matters.
Any other questions to staff, or the commissioners?
No. No.
Hearing none? None, I'll open public hearing? Do I hear a motion to open public hearing?
Make a motion to open public hearing. This is Gillum.
Esparza will second it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abrego?
Yes.
Commissioner Esparza?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gillum?
Yes.
Chair Hyde?
Yes. Do we have any comments, or anybody online that would have anything to say about this, in favor?
No, sir, we don't.
Okay, anyone online, or any comments or mail-ins opposed?
No.
Okay, I need a motion to close public hearing?
Gillum will open, make a motion to open or close the public hearing.
Esparza will second it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abrego?
Yes.
Commissioner Esparza?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gillum?
Yes.
Chair Hyde?
Yes. Okay, oral reports? Oh, no, I need to make a motion for conditional use permit number 885. Do I hear a motion to approve this? I'm sorry, I gotta answer.
I make a motion-
I'm Gillum. I'll make a motion to open it.
Okay, I think I heard. Jaime first, and then Roy will issue as a second?
Yes, I'll do the second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Okay, Commissioner Abrego?
Yes.
Commissioner Esparza?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Gillum?
Yes.
Chair Hyde?
Yes. Now on to oral reports. Any City Council actions?
Uh, yes. Last week, the City Council approved a zone change on 72nd Street. You might recall, you looked at that item in, it would've been March. It was the liquor store and then the residential property. They were zoned industrial. So you recommended that the zone be changed to multiple-family residential, and the council approved that.
Okay, any city attorney, do you have anything to say anything to us?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to tell you and the commissioners that will, that I've been working with for so long. It's been a pleasure and an honor to work with you. I really enjoyed seeing the dialogue among all of you. You've done such a great job in making really critical decisions on probably some of the biggest projects we've had in the city. And I just wanna appreciate and thank you for all the help that you've been given and all the assistance that I've been able to help you with in reaching those decisions. So I wanna thank each and every one of you. And also, Commissioner Jaime Lopez, I would like for you to email me sometime, please.
Absolutely.
Okay, very good. Anything from, any of the commissioners on board, any comments?
This is Gillum. I'd just like to thank John and all you guys for everything you've done for us, you know, and keeping us in line and doing the right thing.
This is Chairman Hyde. I have the same thing to say. I seem to get, wanna go a little fast. Wanna get things done before calling on the right order sometimes. I do apologize for that, but it has been an honor and a privilege to serve these years, and I wish you all the best in the future.
Staff, any comments?
Uh, no comments from staff, thank you.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned until June the 9th at 6:00 PM. Ernie, it's all yours.
Okay. The Paramount Development Review Board is called to order. Roll call of members, please.
Board Member Gillum?
Here.
Board Member Hyde?
Here.
Board Member Lopez?
Here.
Vice Chair Abrego?
Here.
Chair Esparza?
Here. Item one, the minutes. Item one is the approval of minutes of March the 10th. I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes, March 10th.
I'm Roy, I'm Gillum. I'll second it.
Sorry.
Been approved and seconded? Roll call.
Board Member Gillum?
Here.
Board Member Hyde?
Yes.
Board Member Lopez?
Yes.
Board Member Abrego? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Board Vice Chair Abrego? And Chair, Board Chair Esparza?
Yes. Any public comments?
No public comments.
New business? Report is on item two, DRA number 20006. And this is a request by Ronald Ballesteros, Form B Studio Incorporated, for Torino Azul LLC to construct a 3,136-square-foot commercial building at 7351 Rosecrans Avenue in the C3 General Commercial Zone. Staff, please.
Uh, yes. Thank you. This item, again, is a request to allow the construction of a pad commercial building at an existing shopping center that is located at the northwest corner of Garfield Avenue and Rosecrans Avenue. And our planning intern, Erica Barbero, will give you the details. And by the way, this is her first presentation, so go ahead, Erica.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Chair Esparza and board members. As mentioned, today I present development review application number 20006 at 7351 Rosecrans Avenue by Form B Studio for Torino LLC. And the first photo on the title slide, you will see here, it shows the plaza looking north from Rosecrans Avenue. The current tenants that are in the plaza are a subway, flower shop, an insurance office, and taco restaurants. So again, the request is to construct a 3,136-square-foot commercial building in the C3 General Commercial Zone. The property owner submitted development review application in 2008 for three structures on the property, but due to the recession, only two of the three were erected. So today, the request is to build that third structure, the southwest portion of the property. When complete the structure, we'll have three units to be leased. Just note that there are no preferred tenants at this time. Let's see. So currently, the lot also has 56 vehicle parking spaces available, three of which will be ADA compliant. Your third slide shows an aerial view of the plaza, so it's at the corner of Rosecrans and Garfield Avenue. The plaza is colored in purple, and the yellow is showing where the proposed structure will be located. To the north is an industrial area, seen in the photos, with the cars. To the east, there's a 76 gas station. To the south, a second gas station, and across the street is the Farmer's Market Plaza. The site plan demonstrates where the structure will be placed on the lot, again, demonstrating the 56 parking spaces available. The conditions of approval request that the applicant refurbish the landscape, install bicycle racks, and an electrical vehicle charting station. The next slide demonstrates the condition of the lot as it is today. Periodically, it is unkempt and creates blighted conditions in the area. As mentioned before, once the project is complete, landscaping will be updated with drought-tolerant plants. On the next slide, you will see the elevations of the proposed structure. When complete, the exterior of the building will complement the other structures in the plaza. The building will have stone accents, arch elements, metal awnings, which are similar to the other buildings. Staff recommends the approval of the development review application 20006. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions. And the applicant has emailed a statement that he would like to be entered into the record.
Do you wanna go ahead and read it?
Sure.
Erica, thank you.
The intentions of the design was to make sure that it's similar to what it would have been if it were to have been built during the original development. We believe the scale of the proposed is very similar in design and shape of the surrounding structures. And that is by Ronald Ballesteros from Form B Studio. Thank you.
Okay, any comments from board members?
I got a question, Ernie. This is Jaime.
Go ahead.
I'm Abrego.
Yes, go ahead.
Is there parking on Garfield Avenue that's an overflow? Or parking on Rosecrans? Because if you count the number, amount of built tenants, it's gonna be 10 locations. And if each location has two to three employees, it could be up to 20 to 30 cars parked at one time inside the facility. I was just wondering if there's an overflow parking location?
No, when I went to visit the site, it's pretty busy. And right across, or in the front of the proposed structure, there's a bus stop, so that area is out of the question. But as far as I know, there is no overflow parking, and the main streets do not permit it this time because of heavy traffic.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, if I could add, Commissioner Abrego, it does meet the city's parking requirement.
Okay. Any other questions? And if we don't have any other questions, then I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve 20006. This is Gillum.
I second that, this is Lopez.
First and second, I need a- Roll call.
Roll call.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Board Member Gillum?
Yes.
Board Member Hyde?
Yes.
Board Member Lopez?
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Abrego?
Yes.
Board Chair Esparza?
Yes. Three is comments, any comments from board members? Staff?
Nothing from staff.
Okay, the Paramount Development Review Board is adjourned till June 9th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. Thank you. I mean.
The regular, the regular meeting of the Economic Development Board is called to order. May I have a roll call of members, please?
Yes, Board Member Esparza? Board Member Gillum?
Yes, here.
Board Member Hyde?
Here.
Board Vice Chair Abrego?
Here.
Board Chair Lopez?
Here. The first item is the approval of minutes for the month of what would be March. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
This is Esparza. I make a motion to approve the minutes of March 10th.
This is Hyde. I second it, whatever.
Do we have a second? We had it from Board Member Hyde?
Either Hyde or Gil, Roy, either one of us.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of March. May we have a roll call, please?
Board Member Esparza?
Yes.
Board Member Gillum?
Yes.
Board Member Hyde?
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Abrego?
Yes.
Board Chair Lopez?
Yes. Are there any announcements, comments, or questions from the audience pertaining to items on the agenda?
Nothing.
Okay. Item number two is the Assistant Director's monthly report. Doc, please.
Yes, Assistant Director King will give you an update on COVID-19.
Thank you, John. And thank you, Board Chair Lopez. It's been a pleasure working with you here. So this is just a brief oral report. I don't have any slides to accompany the report, so just be verbal. As you know, we're in the, we're in the middle of a historic pandemic here, 100-year pandemic perhaps. We are looking ahead. We're, you know, we started with protecting the economic community, and, but we are looking forward to recovery. And ideally, that will be coming forward in the next few months. But we are, you know, taking our cues from the state of California and county health, county health orders. We take, we take those very seriously. You know, this is the planning department, so we do like to plan ahead, but I will be speaking in terms of the city. So one thing I'd like to point out, that we have established a business recovery committee that will, that has been in contact and will be meeting in earnest and virtually in the coming weeks and months. And it consists of city staff, consists of the Paramount Chamber of Commerce, and a number of businesses involved. Also, the Southeast Los Angeles County Workforce Development Board, SOLACO, which is out of Cerritos, and the city is just recently taking efforts, taking measures to join. And you may be aware of the Small Business Development Center, Long Beach region, so SBDC. They work out of the chamber offices here in town. And so the, this group has formed with the stakeholders from the business community. And the main thing is, we're looking at a number of different ways. So you're looking at the business community in terms of employers with a special attention to small business. And you're looking at the employees, so workforce development, getting folks ready to get back into the workforce. As you know, we're looking at historic highs for unemployment. We're working together to develop a plan in coordination to help boost the local economy as we recover. We are looking at some key sectors. And in addition to the business community, employees, residents, we have to keep the city in mind. So as you know, city services to help assist in this effort are reliant on sales tax revenue. So it is, you know, as in previous briefings, as you're aware, it is kind of a circle, a circular, you know, the circle of life in terms of the local economy. We're encouraging shop local. We're encouraging residents to patronize these businesses. We're working together as a team to figure out how to best use limited city funding and the limited resources we'll be getting from the federal government. We're getting special community development block grant funds ideally to reach out to the community at large. We should also like to point out, there's been a number of efforts on the social media front to get its messaging, to communicate resources for residents and businesses. One other, you know, one program to note is for restaurants, and we're talking about some sectors. We are far from having in-house dining as we had before. So we're helping restaurants promote their takeout services by producing some banners promoting the takeout service. So that's just a sample. We will be keeping the board up to date in future months as these efforts take shape. That concludes my report and happy to take any questions you might have.
Any comments from other board members or staff?
I have a comment. This is Jaime, I'm Abrego. So I saw that the city apartment was involved in a food giving to the needy families in turnout. And I saw that and it was a pretty big event. So congratulations, or thank you for doing this, for being part of that program.
Yeah, I'll second that. I'm Gillum.
I agree. This is Jaime.
Yeah, right. Esparza, great.
We should, we should give credit to the nonprofit community, nonprofit organization, World of Compassion, that kind of led the charge with this effort. And through, it really was a team effort, yeah. So some parts of the city, council member almost had a huge part in coordinating the swap meet. We have to give them credit for lending their large space to, you know, with knowing how many cars and the real need of the Paramount residents. You needed a location that would have, that would minimize the impact to the city streets. So kudos to the swap meet as well.
And just to piggyback on top of that, the City's Recreation Department did a fantastic job arranging all this also. And the Public Works Department was also heavily involved. So just congratulations to both of those departments on doing a well, a well, a well-thought-out event.
Any other comments from board members or staff?
Yeah, this is Jaime Abrego again. I'm going to miss you guys, your commissioners. Hi. I miss all you guys. So I learned a lot from you guys. Yes, with Ernie's experience, we're going to be able to move on because we're losing a lot of years of experience here on our commission. So. I don't know. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Jaime.
Yes, thanks.
This is Esparza. Esparza, yes, I'm going to miss you guys too. Lopez, Hyde, and of course, Roy. So it's been really a pleasure to work with all you guys, okay? So thank you very much.
Thanks, Ernie. Thanks, Ernie.
Yeah, thank you to everybody's comments. I'd also like to add some comments of my own. I don't have anything prepared here, but I do want to go down the list of the people who I want to specifically thank. I'll begin with the Johns, John Kavanaugh, Carver, and King. I want to thank you for consistently having an open door policy, a willingness to share your knowledge, and a civil and professional demeanor at all times. It's been an absolute pleasure to learn from all of you and work with you. And I can't thank you enough, and I hope that we remain in touch. Much work to do in the future, and even without being a planning commissioner, I hope to be part of many efforts going forward. I want to just recognize the young careers of Josephine and Erica. Erica, good job on your first presentation today. I wish you all the best in your flourishing careers, and the same goes to you. I hope that we can also work together at some point and cross paths. Raina, I definitely also want to acknowledge your professionalism, your easygoing demeanor. Definitely going to miss, you know, the professionalism that you bring to the table and appreciate all the work that you're doing. Valerie is always on task, always very responsive to everybody's needs and is extremely professional as well. I don't know if she's on this call, but I definitely appreciated working with Valerie. And Danielle Lazarus, who also at times provided insightful comments when we would be deliberating different topics. And of course, my fellow commissioners, who not only have I grown to respect as fellow commissioners, but also as human beings, who I've been able to share dinners with and conversations about different aspects of life at this time with the ongoing pandemic. There are so many things that all of us reflect on and reevaluate what's important, what's meaningful. And thank you for being part of a very meaningful part of my life up until this point. And I want to wish you all the best and also my doors open, my email, my phone number to anybody who I mentioned. And look forward to speaking more with you all in the future in person. And stay healthy and stay safe. And I, those are my closing comments. And with that said, I'll ask one more time if anyone has any more comments before we close this meeting.
No.
Okay, since there's no further business, the meeting of May 2020 is adjourned to the next scheduled meeting in June of 2020. The Economic Development Board is now closed.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.